Okay.
Okay. Good morning. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to call this Board of Commissioners meeting on July 15th to order. Have a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? I'm...
Aye.
Okay, proclamation presentation. Commissioner Dominic?
Whereas July 26, 2020 is the 30th anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act by President George H.W. Bush, and 57 million Americans have a disability. The Americans with Disabilities Act is the most comprehensive civil rights law in history for people with disabilities. Whereas, the Americans with Disabilities Act reaffirmed the ideas that all people are entitled to participate fully in our economy and democracy, have something to contribute, and deserve every chance to achieve their full potential. And the Americans with Disabilities Act promises fairness, accommodation, and participation in all aspects of American life. Whereas, every individual deserves respect, access, and equal opportunity. Lackawanna County is enriched by the diversity and accomplishments of Americans with disabilities. Whereas, the unemployment rate for people with disabilities is still far higher than that of people without disabilities. We recognize that our work to uphold the spirit and the letter of this law is not yet finished. Now therefore, we, Jerry Natariani, I, Debbie Dominic, and Chris Schirmer, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge everyone whose efforts contributed to the enactment of the American with Disabilities Act and proclaim July 26, 2020 as the Americans with Disabilities Act 30th Anniversary Day in Lackawanna County.
Thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only?
We've had no comments for agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Resolutions 200146.
In the current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County General Fund numbers 305740-306513, inclusive totaling $6,191,255.25. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $4,810,982.12, adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 15, 2020. Mr. Chairman?
Can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes or the payables?
I'll make the motion.
Second the motion.
And a question? All in favor?
One question I have. Again, you know, I look at these things every week. I see the same things. Attorney, $22,000 again. I mean, what? I, we need to take a look at what were for these litigations and things that are going on. I, this is astronomical. It's every, it's every meeting. I don't know what can be done, but I really think we need to take a look at it.
Chris, we have litigation meetings monthly. We have one today. If you'd like to show up to one, you can come to the meeting, and we can explain to you the status of all the current litigation. But I can assure you that nothing is being litigated that doesn't need to be litigated, and the things that do need to be litigated are...
It just seems like an awful lot of money every, every month.
Well, you get what you pay for, and we have good counsel.
Commissioner, let me just say too, part and parcel of what we've attempted to do and in fact have done since taking office in January is we've revamped the, the attorney fee schedules across the board, so that's helped significantly. And we will see a recognized, a significant recognized savings there as well. And to Commissioner Schirmer's point, it is really part of an ongoing process as well, which we will continue or where we will continue to monitor those and take a look at those. We haven't completed that process by any means, so everyone's point is well taken.
And Commissioner, there's a particular invoice. You have a question? I'll be happy to...
Oh, I know. I, I know. I just, it's just, just the numbers, it's just astronomical. I, you know, I get it. I get it, but moving on.
I was thinking, Chris, maybe you should sit in on the meetings, and we can tell you about some of the cases that are pending and what's going on with them.
Well, I'm aware of the cases, but...
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 200141.
Moving Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program applications, whereas the Board of Commissioners has established the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program. And whereas the Board of Commissioners is interested in assisting local communities, organizations, and agencies in the revitalization of neighborhoods since they are the foundation for families and community values. And whereas the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program has been allocated money from the Lackawanna County Economic Development Initiative to be made available for, to county municipalities, municipal authorities, and tax-exempt charitable and educational organizations. And whereas the Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents related to these grants, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby allocate funding for the following, for the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program for the following applicants for the following amounts pertaining to: Old Ford's Little League scoreboard replacement, $5,000. Ambro Revel's American Legion Post 328 metal roof replacement program allotment is $5,000. Archibald Burrow Betty Street Playground Phase Two, $5,000. Blakely Borough Police Technology Upgrade, $4,950. Ransom Township Playground Equipment Upgrades, $5,000. Hitrick McCandrew American Legion Post 869 Installation of Military Piece of Equipment, $5,000. Eureka Hose Company Alephin Fire Station Edition, $5,000. Troop Volunteer Hose Company Station Hall Renovations, $5,000. Holy Rosary Center Gymnasium Upgrades, $5,000. United Neighborhood Centers Pine Brook Revitalization Project, $5,000. Blakely Hose Company Number Two Fire Helmet Upgrade Project, $4,250. Appington Memorial VFW Post 7069 Update HVAC Units, $5,000. United Community Outreach Food Pantry, $4,986. North Scranton Neighborhood Association Western Park Upgrades, $5,000. Warren Brook Township Basketball Court Upgrades, $5,000. Covington Township Police Vehicle Purchase, $5,000. Blakely Community Ambulance Power Ambulance Cock Purchase, $5,000. Columbia Hose Company Number Five Roof Repairs, $5,000. North Scranton Little League Field and Playground Provenance, $5,000. Children's Advocacy Center COVID-19 Child Medical Exams, $5,000. Discovery Preschool COVID-19 Reopening Upgrades, $5,000. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 15, 2020. Mr. Chairman?
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Sacco?
No.
No. On that note, I will accept the motion to approve the Reinvest Program grants.
Make a motion.
Second. Okay, your speaker's not...
I'll use the off there.
On the question?
Sorry, I seconded.
Okay, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 200142.
Warning Environmental Consultant Community-Wide Brownfield Assessment Agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award professional services agreement for environmental consulting for countywide assessment for hazardous substances, countywide brownfield assessment, in an amount not to exceed $566,500 to AMO Environmental Decisions, 875 Northeastern Road, Doylestown, PA 18902. Contract to commence upon execution and continue for the duration of the grant program until September 30, 2022, adopted at a regular board meeting, regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 15, 2020. Here to speak on that is Director Sacco.
Morning.
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 Lackawanna County had applied for, and we were successfully awarded, a $600,000 countywide brownfield assessment grant from the EPA. And this resolution is awarding a professional services contract to AMO in the amount not to exceed $566,500 for environmental consultant services related to that grant. And these services were procured through a fair and equitable RFP process. Any questions?
This was, this was all done properly and above board?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Anyone have any questions from the Sacco? Okay, that will look for a motion to accept the resolution.
I'll make a motion.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 200143.
Providing Provider Contracts for the Office of BHIDEI, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the provider contracts between the Department of Human Services, Lackawanna Susquehanna Behavioral Health Intellectual Disabilities and Early Intervention Program and their providers for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021, with allocations totaling $13,785,544 as attached here too. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 15, 2020. Here to speak on that is the Administrator from Behavioral Health, Ms. Mary Ann Colbert.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
On behalf of the Lackawanna Susquehanna Behavioral Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program, I'm pleased to present our fiscal year 2020-2021 contracts for your review and approval. These contracts are with 52 distinct human service providers and will support approximately 18,700 people for the upcoming fiscal year, providing a full breadth of behavioral health, intellectual disability, and early intervention services, housing, employment, case management, forensic case management, and support and special therapies for infants and toddlers in our early intervention program. And I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have related to any of the contracts.
This is a routine contract, Mayor?
Yes, our routine contracts annually. And as Commissioners are aware, we are continuing to try to meet the needs of Lackawanna and Susquehanna County residents despite flat funding for many years, over 10 years, from the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services. But we operate efficiently and effectively, and our focus is on delivering service to the residents of both counties.
This is money we receive from the, from the state?
Correct. So these are all federal and state funds that require a county match to draw them down. And monies flow into Lackawanna County and our office contracts with providers to deliver the services. We do not provide any direct services out of our office. It's just administrative oversight of all of the monies and the service providers.
Does anyone have any other questions for?
Yes, Mary Ann, can you just explain for people who don't know, it's called Lackawanna, Susquehanna, what their part in this is?
So for Susquehanna County, similar to Lackawanna County, because we are a county joiner, Lackawanna is our, is the lead county for the joiner. So all of the funds flow into Lackawanna County on behalf of the joiner. Susquehanna County does have a similar match to Lackawanna County. The match, the dollar match is lower because the population of the county is substantially lower. It's based on many factors, including the population and the number of services that are delivered there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I would look for a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Resolution 200147.
In the County Intermediate Punishment Grant, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of a Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Grant Application submitted by Lackawanna County Treatment Court for the County Intermediate Punishment Treatment Program in the amount of $419,941. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 15, 2020. Here to speak on that is our Treatment Court Coordinator, Mary Liz Loftus.
Good morning. I sent the grant over. Tracy, thank you for your patience. I know I had to kind of put everything together very quickly. The grant is due with all of the signatures by the end of the month. Because the state budget wasn't finalized, that's why it's kind of like a last minute thing that I put together. So I don't know if you all got a chance to read over all of the details of the grant, if you had any question. I did find out also because I know Commissioner Dominic had asked me about, like, the house arrest, so what the protocol is for that. So I talked to Gene Iden, and he said that we will, you know, help people out with that depending on what the judge says, but also at the same time, you know, they have to realize the consequences of their actions. We won't pay the full bill. We might just help them out with...
I know, and just for the public, you know, they weren't privy to our conversation. We're getting interference. So I understand that the indigent, anyone who commits a crime has to, you know, pay for their actions. My concern was just that if you have to be destitute in order to qualify for a public defender. So I just feel as though sometimes the, somebody who's even trying to comply with the judge's orders and do everything that they're supposed to do in accordance with their sentence is placed at a disadvantage because they can't afford the house arrest. So that, that was a point that I had made, and thank you for explaining that.
Correct. So that's what, yeah, I just wanted to, to clarify that, that, you know, we, we will help out at the judge's discretion, but we won't pay the whole thing, so...
And I've had, I've had judges do that for me, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So in pretty much all of the other stuff, in as far as the budget details, this grant will help pay for the offset some of the personnel, our benefits. We also pay for a lot of, as far as supplies and operating expenses. We have drug testing, and like we talked about, the electronic monitoring. And for consultants, that pays for a lot of people to go to outpatient treatment, outpatient treatment for the uninsured or the underinsured. And it pays for their medically assisted treatment. And also, as far as consultants, we help people if they need assistance with rent, paying for a sober house. There's a lot of people that get out of the prison, and they don't have a safe place to live, so we will help them with, like, their first month's rent in a sober house or some kind of sober living. And we also use the money under consultants to help with job coaching. Goodwill helps us with that, so we do a lot of job coaching with them. Because again, a lot of our people, either they don't have jobs, they're coming out of prison, they have their past, so goodwill works with them as far as knowing which employers will hire people that do have a blemish on their past record. And we work with outreach also. Our participants are connected with outreach to, to do some therapy with them. So that's just, you know, an example of a lot of the stuff that's covered under consultants. It's pretty much anything that tries to help them, that can help them with their recovery. And bus passes, that's another thing that's under the bus passes and the transportation, because a lot of people don't have their driver's license or they can't afford reliable transportation. So we will help them with bus passes on the call.
Anyone have any other questions? I'll entertain a motion for that resolution to be approved.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 200148.
Warning the Health and Benefits Consultant, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award the Health and Benefits Consultant to One Digital Cummings Insurance, 538 Spruce Street Suite 504 Scranton, Pennsylvania 18503, and 1301 Madison Avenue, Dunmore, Pennsylvania 18509. Three-year agreement to commence immediately pending review and approval by the county solicitors with the cost of one, with the cost of year one of the service to be at $62,000. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 15, 2020. Here to speak upon that is our CFO, Tom Durkin.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, Commissioners. We're just asking that the Commissioners approve the agreement with One Digital for HR benefit consulting services that arose as a result of a recently completed RFQ.
And Mr. Durkin, this was affected by you yourself and many other staff members that are...
Yeah, a committee of six, Commissioner.
Committee of six. It was not interfered with by the Commissioners. It was what was decided by...
The decision was the committee's decision. The recommendation of the committee, as I said, was One Digital, and that's the, the company we're asking to be approved today.
And I did, I did yesterday do presentations from several companies so that I can make an informed decision, and I agree with the recommendation of the committee.
That's great.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone have any other questions for Mr. Durkin?
Tom, you think there'll be a significant savings from the company that we have now?
The, the, the cost of service is actually about $4,000 more for, for the first year of the contract compared to the old company. However, we are absolutely certain that the services provided will be significantly more beneficial. And one of the things, for example, that One Digital told us that they're anxious to get started on is reviewing our pharmacy spend and potentially engaging a new pharmacy company, or not, depending on what the results of their, their work are, to try and save money in the pharmacy area, which has kind of exploded over the last four years. So that's something that they're essentially going to hit the ground running. And we have the existing contract with the pharmacy provider, which is CVS Caremark, and the third-party administrator for that pharmacy spend. Those contracts expire on January 31, 2021. So we're hoping to have a new, or just renew the existing, if, if that's more prudent, pharmacy contract in place, one, one, or February 1, 2021. And we are hoping that some of the things that we're going to do, I mean, another thing we're going to look at is during the term of this contract, potentially consolidating the existing three health insurance options that county employees have into one more profound health insurance plan that is managed by one company. It's well-known in the industry that to have one company manage your total health spend is considerably more efficient, saves money, provides better services to the employees. And, and part of that as well is we, two years ago, moved our prescription spend inside the, the P-Chip Consortium that manages our health insurance spend. And we're hoping that, that in the next couple of years, if we can consolidate the three plans, we'll have one insurance company that essentially manages all our medical spend as well as our prescription spend. That's what we're looking forward to. We'll see how quick we get there. But we do expect to save funds in the long run with this, Commissioner.
I, I agree with that, and I would hope that, you know, we can convince the unions that that is the smartest thing to do and to save the taxpayers' money. I mean, that's the ultimate goal, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Durkin? Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 200148.
I'll make a motion.
Second. On the question?
We didn't get a second.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Resolution 200144.
Appointment to Lackawanna County Stadium Authority, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Stadium Authority, Michael S. Bartletti, 535 George Street, Old Ford's, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2024. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 15, 2020. Commissioners, Mr. Bartletti is the head coach of the University of Scranton's baseball team with over 30 years of experience on his resume in the global sports area. He's actually a baseball guy through and through. He's an excellent choice for the seat on the stadium authority.
Great. Anyone have any questions? Undertain a motion to, for the resolution 200144.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board. Ms. Hart?
We have seven emails today. So the first one is going to be from Lori Brazil. It says, can you please explain why there was no RFP for the George Swede contract?
Commissioners, we believe what Ms. Brazil is referring to is the contract in the Arts and Cultural Department with Maury McGuigan. The Mr. Swede's group has had an existing relationship with them and was hired as a professional service through the Arts and Cultural Program.
The next one is from Trip O'Malley, and he said, "Thank you for taking my question regarding the county's recycling. Can you please find out when the lease with the center's operator ends and let me know?"
Once again, Commissioners, just for the public's knowledge, the Commissioners and the administration does not have a contract with the operator. The, the authority does, the solid waste authority does, and I don't know when it expires. They would have to contact the authority. The chairman is Rich Miller. The solicitor is Mr. Tom Cummings. They can contact them and see when their contract expires. I really don't know that, to be quite honest with you.
I'm sure we could reach out to them and find out. Send them an email.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get back to Trip, but I just don't know it off the top, offhand.
Okay. The next one is from Marie Schumacher. She says, for today's meeting, "What is the dollar amount saved as a result of the lockdown? Number two, when will we not have to make an appointment to visit our county headquarters?"
Well, the lockdown, I don't know if she's referring to the lockdown, like, at the prison or in this building. The building was, was not completely locked down at all, ever. I mean, we, we were still coming into work here during the entire emergency. What we did was the public was allowed to come into the foyer downstairs for emergency situations. So I don't know what the answer to that question is. I don't know if she's referring to the Globe Store, because we had, it's not just the Globe Store. We had Gateway Center. We had multiple courthouse. The courthouse is still doing everything virtually. And I don't know if she's referring to us or the, or the prison, but... So there's not really a definitive answer for that one. The second one is what we do here in the, in the, in the building here is we like to do it by appointments because people are escorted through the building. We don't want people just walking around within the building because sometimes people tend to take masks off and stuff like that and put others in danger. So what the row offices in our departments do is they ask for an appointment. The appointment is set. They come downstairs to the receptionist desk when they call up, and then they escort them up to the building, or up to the office. And, and then they, they do their business, and then they escort them back down again. But so, you know, there are people that, that show up every day without appointments for paying taxes, seeing the tax claim department, stuff like that. We're not turning people away. We prefer that they come by appointment. And even if they don't show up, or if they show up without an appointment, they are still escorted around. They're just going to have to wait. they are still escorted around, they're just going to have to wait, um, until the, the individuals who have appointments are finished.
I, I think the system we have in place is working just fine. We don't limit anybody to visit the building. They can come anytime, especially, we are recommending an appointment. I think that's a good thing. We're still in the middle of a pandemic, and for the safety of the employees here and for the safety of the Sheriff's Department and everybody all included, uh, I think it's the best way to handle it. So I, I think.
Until the pandemic ends, we don't have an answer for it.
I know.
It's just not possible for us to answer that. You know, we're.
The next four I have are concerning the upcoming tax sale. So the first one is from Brian West. He says, good morning, I am interested in attending the tax sale auction. However, considering the current events regarding the pandemic and social distancing, I have some concerns about being in a room full of bidders. Has anyone thought about, um, conducting a virtual auction? Thank you in advance. The next one is from someone named Jerry. I don't have a last name. It says, to whom it may concern, I believe that a virtual tax sale should be held due to the COVID- nineteen, and it may also be easier and quicker, in my opinion. It may be time to think about moving forward into the future, like other counties and jurisdictions have done. The third one is from Mike Wolf of Reserve Properties Limited. He said, in the past, I have attended and purchased homes and land from the Lackawanna County Tax Sale. I am shocked that the Commissioners feel the ga, that a gathering of two hundred and fifty to three hundred people during a pandemic is a good idea. There must be a way to do a tax or judicial sale online. Online, you will get many new bidders at the sale. Please look into a better way of doing the sale without risking the health of the staff or bidders. And the last one I have is from Ron Koljewski, former Tax Claim Bureau Director. This is, to all greetings, I hope everyone is well and staying safe. This communication is regarding the upcoming judicial sale. I have come to learn the sale date, time, and physical location. However, I find it odd that in this time of pandemic and social distancing, a virtual bidding option is not being offered. As elected and appointed officials, it is incumbent upon you to collect delinquent taxes and return as many properties to the tax roll as possible. I believe by not offering a virtual component, you are limiting the number of bidders and ultimately the success of the sale. To date, I believe the county has spent approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on legal fees, title searches, and professional sheriff services. It is extremely important to recoup that money because it is taxpayer money that was used for these bills. I know these are unprecedented times, and it calls for extraordinary actions. The virtual component, I believe, will serve the sale and taxpayers well if utilized. I also believe a concerted effort should be made by elected and appointed officials to increase the repository sales to return those one thousand, two hundred and ninety parcels to taxpaying status. All this, I know, takes hard work, however, it is something that must be done in order to keep the tax rate stable and expand both the economic and assessment basis of the county. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll address all four of those at once. The, uh, Joe Joyce, who is our acting tax claim director and solicitor at the same time, and myself, looked into doing a virtual judicial tax sale. Uh, it was very difficult. We couldn't find many, if any, uh, vendors that could actually do that. There was one that was from either the west or, or the south, and I mean, like, the, the west coast or, or the south, southeast Florida that could do it. There was none individual for, that was local. But the problem with it became is that we do believe there'll be a hundred and fifty people on there, uh, that will come to this tax sale, and to get them all onto one screen and have them bidding, uh, at once, would, we assessed would just, uh, come mass confusion. So we looked at a number of spots where we thought we could do this safely. We didn't really have a lot of time. Uh, I mean, I know we, it's, it's been pushed off twice. But the fact of the matter was, is that we were having other pressing issues at the time. So we came up with the Scranton Cultural Center, which seats a thousand. Uh, and I know that, uh, we're not going to get a thousand people, but we're going to spread them out in there with their placards so they can, they can do their bids, uh, with, with the, uh, the safety measures put in place. I, I toured the place with Commissioner Toriany, I toured the place with the tax claim, uh, individuals, uh, the staff and, uh, Mr. Joyce himself. And, uh, we were satisfied, satisfied with how this would be set up, uh, in a safe manner. It's the best that we can come up with right now. Uh, maybe in the future, we will, we will see more companies coming forward that can do this for us, and we can bid it out and see how it works. But it was all new to us, trying to do this with so many people, uh, on the ta, television screen or a computer screen. I don't think we would have been fruitful in any way, shape, or form.
I, I think the virtual, you know, uh, sale is something that is certainly conceivable at some point in the future. We're just not set up for it, and time is of the essence at this point. It was always done in person. All we're going to do temporarily is to, to move it and continue looking at the virtual sale.
Any other questions, Commissioners, for me about that subject?
Okay, well, next is Commissioners' other business. Mr. Shermack?
Um, yeah, a couple, couple of good things. Number one, the trolley, our trolley museum is finally back up and running. You know, they have a nice schedule, they're running limited seating on the trolleys. Wayne Hiller, our, our manager over there, has done a great job keeping things clean and sanitized, and, and he has the place spick and span. So, you know, I'm urging people to, uh, get over and take a look, take a ride on the trolley. It's, uh, well worth your time. And on another good note, there's a lot of nice pizza places here in Lackawanna County. Old Forge is our, uh, pizza capital of the world. Well, back in April, it, it came to my attention that our Carolyn Jennels was inducted into the Pizza Hall of Fame. So, you know, being in business since nineteen sixty-two, congratulations, our Carolyn Jennels. I know I, I enjoy that restaurant, so kudos to those people.
Commissioner Dominic?
I have nothing, Jerry.
Yes.
No, I say I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Well, I actually am too. Uh, on that note, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I agree with that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a nice day. Mr. Durkin, are you in your office?
Have a great day, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Yeah. Are you in your, yeah?